Change order that we're going forth because we haven't had anything large enough to identify to go through as far as the change order coming. Right now, if we have something that comes up, it's not foreseen. There's funds right now that we have that are, we're trying to free up and get moving. That's pretty much all I can really say to you. We have things that, what you're asking us right now is, is there something that we don't see? That we know we're going to see in the future that we want to have money set aside for?
That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is in phase one and two, which is complete other than a punch list, was there anything submitted as unofficial change orders? And my answer, your answer first was, well, not officially. So then I'm asking, well, unofficially then, is there a request on the table now for a change order in phase one or two that has or has not been completed?
Right now, like I said, the one thing that we have that's identified right now in full that we need, there's this contingency budget. That's, I, as far as anything.
I got it. I got it. Thanks.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think, I think I'm understanding what Council Norris and everybody's asking. So we have three phases. The amount that's in here in the resolution is what was originally asked. We missed a contingency. Phase one, phase two is complete. There has not been any requests or already known change orders or any that's going in future. I understand the punch list, something could come up from there. But, but just shake all that out, you know, just shake that off. And so what we're going forward with is phase three and the contingency is basically for phase three, correct?
For what we have right now, this contingency is to cover what we can see that could potentially be coming up with phase three. This is not saying that this is going to be an issue. That the whole point in this is doing our due diligence to have these funds available in case something happens.
Right, so.
We're not saying that there's something that's going to rear its head as of right now. If there is something, this contingency will cover it.
Right.
And this allows us to continue to go forward, you know, as you normally would within the project.
I understand.
That's that.
Understood. So the amount, the six hundred and plus thousand was originally passed, uh, passed, voted on for phase one, two, and three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so because we don't know what's going to happen in phase three, we're just applying this contingency. That's basically the base of this.
So this contingency would have been throughout one, two, and three?
Right.
That's what I, that's the point with that. It was across the board, all phases.
Right, so it was missed. So it was missed. We didn't need it. We've used the funds basically from the six hundred something thousand. But now we're adding the contingency because maybe something came up from one and two. It could potentially happen in three, so we're asking for this contingency that was missed. That's basically what boils down to.
That's what it was. Based off of when we examined it, risk that we had that could come up, that, that's why we saw this, identified the need to come to you guys.
But according to the contract that was signed and agreed to, we don't foresee anything presently. I know when you get into projects, anything, you rip it out and up. We didn't foresee that. I understand that. But just when it was, excuse me, when it was bid on, that was the money. So that is in the contract. This is what we're going to do and that's how much it costs originally without the contingency.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, one, I do, before we vote on it at a meeting, if we can get how much is spent on it, on the project so far. But also, what was the original timeline of this project?
I have to go back in a moment. I won't laugh, top of my head.
Because my notes say two to three months. And that's when we voted on it in January of 2024. But that might be the amount of actual working time of the project, not within when we voted on it?
Yeah. Go ahead, Ron.
I believe the contract, and believe, correct me if I'm wrong, went through January and it needed, that's, we got the extension for it because there was a lead time for the windows and the storefront and all of that.
February 12th, actually. That was, that was February 12th. And we had, based per time when the windows were ordered, that was delayed off. And there was, I can't remember the exact delayed date from when manufacturing to when we'd have delivered product, but there was a significant delay that happened that caused us to have to extend everything out further.
Oh, I think that's what my two to three months note is for, that that's how long the windows take to fabricate. So what was, so do we not know what the original timeline of this project was supposed to be?
Fe- February 12th.
This year?
Yes, 2025.
Okay.
It might have been February 16th. I, I'm, well, I can't remember the actual date. It was 12th or 16th.
So.
I'm kind of.
Okay, so what is our current timeline for finished date?
April 16th. That's what they're forecasting right now. And they also have weather dates that are factored in, just like today. We had, you know, in case there's anything that comes up that's too much for, or could affect the final product, then they'll have weather days that are built into that.
Okay. I still, again, I understand what you're saying, that it's industry standard. Going back and looking at the proposals, we had this proposal reviewed by an outside, by a third party, by Lothrup. And they recommended this vendor and that the amount was sufficient for the replacement. Like they analyzed, the windows that were proposed were different than the windows we had put in the original bid, I believe, or the original RFP. And Lothrup reviewed it and said that it was acceptable. And they're the ones that kind of endorsed, well, they, their letter is endorsing this vendor as appropriate to do this project. Again, I'm hesitant. But I think that if we have the information that Director Uhas is going to provide, I do think we can vote on it. I'm prepared to vote on it in the next meeting. I don't have a problem moving it to the mayor and council meeting. But I, I do think that it would be appropriate in this case to at least keep the council aware of any change orders coming in and any cost above that amount. I think especially going into a year where, you know, I'm fairly certain the town is going to raise taxes, just looking at their proposed budget. I don't know that we're going to be able to escape that either. I think we really need to be vigilant on what money we're approving because taxpayers are looking at these things at cost overruns and wondering why we have them so often, not just us, the town, every town. It's a hot, hot topic right now. And I think that we wouldn't be doing our job as counselors if we didn't scrutinize it a little more heavily, especially in the case that a mistake has already been made on this project. Not, again, I'm not trying to, you know, shame someone or, you know, any particular person, but I think for us, our responsibility to the taxpayers means that we do have to pay closer attention. That's all.
Counselor Sheffield?
To reiterate for that contingency, that, that money can be utilized for all three phases, phase one, two, and three. Because I think to slightly piggyback on, a little bit on Councilor Norris, as far as we haven't, no one has asked for anything for phase one or two. There hasn't been a request that you know of.
So right now, what we have is the stuff that's in there is still owned by the general contractor.
Okay.
So if we, you know, that's the thing. That's why we haven't given full payment across the board with this stuff.
Okay.
Why we have issues that, you know, we're waiting on a punchless item, anything like that, because they're, again, I don't want to say, there could be things that can rear their head. It's not that they will, it's that they can be. That's the whole point of having this contingency that's built in. That's it. But these funds normally would have been in there from the beginning of the project for all three phases as we went. We wouldn't be even sitting here right now. It was, again, something that just got, that was an oversight. That was all. And per Lothrup, with what they did, they, the bid that they saw was, yes, in fact, it is, they approved it based off everything. That's it. There's nothing else that goes wrong per their scope. Everything 100% falls in line, nothing changes, nothing goes out of the way, nothing, deliverables, anything along those lines, nothing changes. Yes, that's where they said it was within that scope. That's why nothing's ever perfect. You have your contingency cost that gets factored in based off of that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can we also get a copy of the executed contract? Thank you.
Is there anything else you need? Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of April 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, utilities? So Bill, we'll be talking transformers.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Good evening. So tonight, I am, I have three action items that I'm going to seek, I'm going to speak to and then seek approval for in a couple of weeks. And they all involve transformer purchases. I'd like to quickly speak to a common backup to each of them and then I'll speak to the three if that works for you. Currently, we have a lower than normal inventory in stock for transformers. And these go all the way from pad mount transformers for large buildings, all the way down to pole mounts. We typically order them every year. The last time that we ordered was two years ago. I, I can speak to the PO that we cut two years ago and I still don't have all of the transformers. The reason why is the delivery for these things can take a year and a half to two years to get the actual transformer. There's problems from COVID-19 with obtaining materials for the assembly, labor force issues, et cetera. Again, the lead time is up to two years. I reached out to Norwich Public Utilities as well as Eversource. They too are feeling the pain with this. Matter of factly, we get into situations where they have jobs or a failure with a transformer, they'll reach to us, do we have one that we can loan them, et cetera. So it's, we're really all feeling the pain for that. Let's see, so, you know, you look at, we put a bid out, we put a package out, we have a number of transformers that we look to order. And I think I can speak to the quick, the total of them is, so there's 65, 57, and 14. So comes up to quite a, quite a few transformers. We put the price out and we have three proposals that we would like to seek approval for. The first one is for Wesco Emco. And that is the one for 14 transformers, looking for approval for $156,224.20. That's the first one. The second one is through Wesco Eaton Cooper. That is seeking approval for $162,844.00. That's for a total of 65 transformers. And the last one is through Graybar Electric. And that is seeking approval for $458,755.95. And that is for 57 transformers.
And I want to draw your attention to that one because that has a 25% contingency. Bill, you want to go into why we chose 25% for those transformers?
So, thank you, Mayor. So the particular reason for that one being higher than the others is that that particular manufacturer is coming in from Mexico and we're afraid with the tariffs. So just play it safe. We put that number on there just to cover, just in case.
Okay. So any questions on transformers? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, these are all budgeted expenses that are already planned for in our regular budget?
That's absolutely correct. We have roughly a million dollars to work with that we approved. And I think this came up to, the total with all of the transformers included, came to, let me see here, $777, 824, and 15 cents. So we're quite a bit under.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sheffield?
Do we need any additional transformers going forward? Because it's that figure of over 700,000, that's three quarters of what we have, so.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question. So the good news is, we put it out to several people and, you know, the prices came in very high. I think one of them was 1.3 million for all of them. And by manipulating the three sources, it worked out really well for us. We have some stock right now and that's good. So it's just, this is the normal inventory, you know, so a good example is, we have a couple of big projects going on. Triton Square, the large apartment complex that you can see just before you cross the bridge, that's 305 apartments. So up and through there, we have, just that site alone, five large pad mount transformers going in there. West Street has projects coming in, you know, where they're going to do the apartments in the back there. Also down on Gold Star Highway, there are additional apartments going to be going in. So it gets tricky. So you, you think about it, Triton Square, that's a big project. It's going to take them a couple of years to build the building, right? So we, we placed our orders for the transformers and lo and behold, here we are, two years into it, they're ready to get the building energized and we're, you know, calling out to the manufacturer, where are you at? So we really look to stay on top of that. One of the things that I'm going to do next year into the budget is to be more timely with the, I'm going to set up better Min and Max for the, for the inventory. But I'm also going to look throughout the year as we consume a portion, I'm going to place an order then and place an order, you know, so perhaps three months into it, six months into it, based on the draw off of the transformers. So we're going to be more mindful as we consume the transformers and we're going to be more timely with our orders, which wouldn't, which should protect us from being any risk.
Because one of the challenges we have is that we're basically one big storm away and it doesn't have to be our storm. It could be somebody else's storm and then they're going to need transformers. And then the supply is going to be, you know, people are going to go to that supply for those transformers and those are the same transformers we're going to need in the future. So we are ordering a bunch in advance and then we are going to continue to order in ahead of time so that we don't run into issues where work is held up because we don't have transformers. Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move these three resolutions to the mayor and council meeting of April 7th, 2025.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is mini excavator purchase.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a request for, to create a purchase order to HO Penn for a value of $112,357.35. To break it down, it's 107, 007, and we had a 5% contingency on this one, which is an extra five. So the total is again, 112, 357, 35. A little bit of history on this one. The purchase will be coming from Sourcewell. That is a government and education type of organization that supports companies like us and governments like us for discounted prices. It's a free membership. This particular unit, we have two backhoes. The mini excavator, the benefit to us is we have a couple of big jobs coming up. We're going to be doing the lead line inventory project where I've got to do roughly 200 test pits to check, to confirm that we have lead or non-lead feeding into our residences. I've got future construction projects, water and sewer service installs and repairs, water main breaks, hydrant replacements. This particular unit, instead of going out there in the roadways and ripping up the road with our backhoes, the mini excavator adds a lot of benefit for us. It's a safety benefit, the ease of transportation. We can maneuver this smaller unit throughout the streets with traffic, you know, cars parked, et cetera. It also has some additional tools that we don't have. Not only is it compact, it has a small bucket, but also has a, an attachment, a hammer attachment, which will eliminate our, the need for our guys to go out and jackhammer. So it really is a tool that I feel that we should have had in our fleet quite some time ago. I think it's a great price for $112,357. It's going to save us time on labor. It's going to, you know, save our guys on their, you know, work, you know, back strain, et cetera, with the jackhammers. I think it's a win for us.
And I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, I like the low 5% contingency. So I think obviously the, you know, the benefits, the city for having a low contingency and, you know, it seems like a low-risk purchase, so.
Yep. I think they have the machine on stock, so we should hopefully be timely with getting it, getting it.
Good, good.
Anyone else? Counselor Piazza?
Just comment, I mean, thank you for your thorough explaining of it. And I was, my question was going to be until you explained it was, is it, is this something we replace or whatever? But there's something we're going to obtain. But in the long run, looking at, you know, high risk of injury using the old stuff and then maneuver around the traffic and all the projects coming up, I think it's a, it's a win-win.
And it's a win.
You know, when you do the cost and everything, what it's going to cost. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Any other quote? Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting.
Councilor Norris.
Counselor Norris, you had a question?
Yes, please.
Counselor Norris, you have the floor?
Is this some piece of equipment that would be used on a regular basis or there are periods of time that potentially it could be shared with roads and highway?
So this is something that I won't be usually, using full-time. It is something that we could share across the city and I think there's a great opportunity for that. I will tell you, right now, we're currently renting a small mini excavator to do some, you know, clearing up a brush, et cetera. It's something we use every year. So really, I feel this purchase is going to offset some costs for us across the organization. So I would agree that that to be true.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing that, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of April 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Lawns and ground maintenance contract?
Yes, sir. So this, this particular one is for a contract to enter into a three-year contract with an option for a three-year renewal for lawn and grounds maintenance with America Grounds and Snow Management. The cost of the contract is $100,000 per year. We put out an advertisement for bids for this particular job. Again, we, we do it every year. It really includes cleaning up the grounds and grass maintenance, et cetera, for all around the reservoirs, all around all of our pump stations, sewer treatment plant areas, any other common areas that we do. It's a three-year contract, again, with a three-year renewal. We put bids out. We had one particular vendor that came in a little bit under, it was $75,000. But they did not meet the insurance. They didn't have the minimum insurance that we require. So again, this is, again, it's just something we do every year. It's just a renewal, setting up for next year. Yep, that's it.
Okay, I'll open the floor for questions. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So who is the contractor that had the previous contract?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know who currently had it, but we're very dissatisfied with their service. This particular organization has got a couple of really good pluses to it. So they're local, they're out of Groton, which we love, right? So our own community. They have 25 employees staffed, so there's plenty of manpower. And we called three of their current references that they're utilizing. All came in with stellar feedback. So we feel very confident with these guys.
And do you know the amount of the annual contract?
The current one?
Yes.
I do not. I can get you that should you wish. Yep, I don't know who we have right now and I don't have the value for the existing one. I apologize for that. But I know I've heard the guys are very unsatisfied.
Could you please, could we get that information before the next?
What information do you want?
Who the current contractor is and what the, what we're paying them annually.
Sure thing. I'm happy to get that.
Provide that to our office and we'll get that to the council.
I can get you that, sure.
Thank you.
You sure? Absolutely.
Counselor Sheffield?
You said the previous, like I said, it's a three-year comp. Was this current deal right now, three years or was that, was this annually?
Finishing up the three-year and that's why we put it back out the bid. We're not satisfied and we want to back out the bid.
Okay. So this is again, three years and then we'll, it'll be actually a renewal after the third, after three years.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move.
Yes, please.
Counselor Norris?
So Bill, can you tell me how many labor hours are we looking at in this contract?
I don't have that, counselor. I can look into that for you. So it's not only just seasonal, the grass care, all of that stuff, we do, we get involved with brush cleanups. We have some properties up in Ledger that we also take care of, that this company will, will satisfy for us. I can speakly, I can speak quickly to some of the quotes that came in. Again, this one, we're going to go, we wish to go with is $100,000. The other one was 134, 725. And then there's a large organization, which I feel truly did not need the work and they threw a high number out at us. It was 525,000. So this one's 100. I feel very confident with them. Again, we did, we do, we did our due diligence. We reached out to everyone, three good references and everybody, everybody's thrilled with these guys. And they are local, which is nice. I know the current organization we have is not local and that's been part of the difficult problems, you know, that we've been having. You're most welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of April 7th, 2025.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries unanimously? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all. Look at your information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, lastly, planning and economic development update. So Leslie and Sierra?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you all again. I'm going to go first. I'm going to talk, I just want to give you all a, kind of a high-level overview of what has gone on with the zoning regulations so that you're aware and you can talk to your constituents about it because I know they've had questions, even though we've done an awful lot of outreach. And so, and then Sierra will talk about resiliency. So I will, so I did send everyone to your council email. I sent you today a set of links that, where you can go for more information so that I'm not giving you all of the minute stuff that you either probably know.
This was set at the end of the day. The decision was made mid-delay date to, to have this presentation. And so I asked Leslie, go ahead and send that to you, not necessarily so that you would have it for this discussion, but so that you can go look at it after this discussion and you may have additional questions. This isn't, this is informing, so there's no action coming out of this, these two briefings. So Leslie, please continue.
Correct, thank you. So as you probably know, for, over the last couple of years, we've been, the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission's been working very diligently on revising the zoning regulations for the general commercial zone, which is primarily from Broad Street on, at Thames, going north over Bridge to, continuing Bridge to the town border and then North Street from the highway exit entrance down to just before the park. And it is. And it is the area, it was, that area was chosen because it's really the area that is most suitable to kind of reinvention, if you will. Um, it's the, most other places are developed and may need increased development, um, guardrails or incentives, but this is where there seems to be the most opportunity. And so it also follows along the lines of several studies that have been done over the last few years, um, starting with the P O C D that was adopted in two thousand nineteen. So the regulations that were passed by the commission on, um, the twenty-second of January of this year, they were, by the way, passed unanimously, um, those, and the regulations as the text amendment portion, and also the map, that, that G C zone was divided into, um, an additional five districts to be able to have a more nuanced way of looking at regulation of the land and what goes on it, um, in a, in a way that helps to start creating neighborhood, a neighborhood there, and a, and sort of a, a trend of the neighborhood as it goes from a lower density to a higher density, um, from Broad Street all the way to where the roller rink used to be and where the motel is. So there's very, there was a, a number of, um, special meetings where the commission got together and met and talked about all of these things in great detail. I have to say, this is probably the best commission I've ever worked with. They were really amazing, very thoughtful, um, and, um, so, again, that's the P O C D, was sort of the first step. Then there was the, uh, Thames Street and Economic Development Studies that followed on that, and we know that there's a housing need. There's stud, there was a housing study done as well. Um, we also looked at parking and transportation issues, um, not all of which we, as the city, even have the opportunity to affect. It's just, you know, we can't put in a monorail where we want, um, but looking at the things that we can. Um, also, like, bikeability and walkability, which was a real strong force in the P O C D. How do we make these areas, uh, more comfortable for people to walk and bike? Um, and then finally, the resiliency study. So this, the regulations took into account all of these things and had to balance all of these things. Um, so, just quickly, the, um, the things that were really important, kind of the highest priority, was being able to allow multifamily housing and mixed use on properties in this area. Right now, um, well, with the, uh, the regulations that are still in force, um, the, those existing regulations, only two dwelling units per parcel, not per acre, but per parcel. So it doesn't matter how big the parcel is. Is it tiny or is it big? Only two dwelling units per parcel are allowed. That means that if it was fully built out, could only build a hundred and ten units, which may sound big, but it's actually very small when you're trying to make an impact on housing. Um, under the revised adopted regulations, um, the number is more in the neighborhood of, the absolute maximum would be fifteen hundred and seventy-two. Um, and it would be done in a way based upon the other regulations that are included in terms of using buildings to create spaces in the public realm, the pa, spaces in the streets, um, so that they felt like comfortable places. Right now, people don't really go for a stroll on Bridge Street. Um, but, uh, if you look at the renderings at the end of the PowerPoint, um, that's part of the presentation that's in the link that I sent to you, um, you'll see that there are renderings that show what it could be, and it, it was very compelling. Um, also reducing parking requirements for the housing, so that there's a shared housing, uh, a shared parking factor, which I won't go into now, but it is, um, so you're not providing parking on private properties that are, you know, where you're doubling up. You're doing one for anybody who might be using retail in the, during the day, and one for housing. You enable those to switch. Um, and then added design considerations. That doesn't mean that it's, you know, buildings have to be Gothic or buildings have to be, um, colonial. It, it just talks about the form of buildings and where they are, how close they are to, um, the streets, where there are, um, what kinds of sort of layers between the street and the facade of the building can exist. Um, and you'll see those in the renderings. Um, the other thing is, um, that as we've gone through all of these multitude of issues with the commission, um, again, they were always keeping in mind whether it was consistent with the plan of conservation and development, whether it was consistent with other things we'd heard from other, um, applications over the last few years. Um, we've had some multifamily housing, um, applications that have come through that were not successful and some that were successful, and what was it that made some work and some not work. Um, also, bringing forward a lot of best practices for planning, which have changed a lot over the years. Um, just so that you know, the last time the zoning regulations were updated in a holistic way was two thousand sixteen. It's a long time to go, um, without some serious revisions. It doesn't mean you have to re, overhaul and rewrite the whole thing, but without going over some serious revisions. So this was very timely. Um, even with the increase in the ability to add dwelling units, um, at a dramatically higher rate under the adopted regulations, based on the numbers generated by a number of housing studies, including C cog, um, we're still, we still have a deficiency, particularly because of the employees from, that we expect from, uh, to be added to Electric Boat, but we still have a deficiency of over five thousand dwelling units. Doesn't mean that the city has to accommodate all of those, just to give you a sense of what the regional demand is. And one of the things that the commission kept in mind, um, and really kept in the forefront of their mind is, we've been hearing about revitalizing Thames Street, revitalizing Thames Street for a very long time, and one of the things that I truly believe, um, is that the way to revitalize Thames Street is to re, revitalize either end of Thames Street, so the Bridge Street area, and then, um, the area down by Electric Boat. They're two totally different animals, so it's not like you can do them the same way, but, and then have that revitalization move toward the center. If you do that sort of a barbell approach, one of the things that you do is you find out where expansion or development or investment starts and stops along Thames Street. The other thing is you're not looking at, um, one of, one of the reasons that Thames Street is a, a challenge is that it's a difficult street to walk, not because of lack of sidewalks or anything, but there's no, there's no protection from the weather. There's no shade protection in the summer for ex, very extended stretches. So you're not, you know, it's not like you're running from under this tree to under that tree. That makes a place more exciting and actually can promote development, um, and promote people actually occupying space. Um, but if you've only got that stretch and it's over a mile, where there's no shade, there's no shelter. Um, and if you look at the renderings in the PowerPoint, um, you'll see that there is a, that the buildings that are proposed in terms of form, um, is, they include covered porches. They include, you know, sort of glassed-in front areas with businesses on the first floor and offices or, or residences above, and the ability to change those uses over time, so we're not looking at buildings and tearing them down and to build something else that may or may not actually get built. Also looking at how to maximize the use of the different areas in that stretch based upon the changes in topography. The, the sites are all very different. If you look at the parcels along Thames Street on the water side, it's very different from the parcels on Bridge Street on the north side, where there's this sort of very slim piece of the top of a cliff, for lack of a better word, and then it drops, and it's very low, and it goes out toward the railroad. Um, so we looked at ways to be able to maximize the use of that topography, so that it could be, um, we, we're not looking at, um, skyscrapers, no, um, with one exception in the, at the very bottom of where Thames and Bridge come together, um, those buildings can be, um, up to four, oh, up to five stories. Everything else is either three or four stories max at the street, okay? In some cases, where the, that cliff condition occurs, people, uh, developers or property owners can build two below, so they could get six stories, but you only see four from the public, any public area. We also looked at sections, site sections. Uh, we knew that there was gonna be some concern about where people could see from their houses and the views they've had up until now. Um, and it's absolutely become an issue for fam, for people, excuse me, not for families, four people have, um, filed suit, and, um, they've taken an appeal to Superior Court, which is why I'm here. This is not a, an executive, um, session level conversation. There's not, everything I'm saying is totally public. Um, but that appeal has put a stay on being able to implement these regulations, so we are now at a point where we could be, in fact, really getting, um, a lot more of a tax base if these buildings were able to be built. People have been holding on to this property for a very long time, waiting for this opportunity. Um, and Sierra and I both have been talking to people who either own or want to develop or want to purchase property in this area, um, to be able to build housing for the most part. Um, and so we're on hold right now. That's why I wanted to be, um, the commission has, has done an amazing job. They, they've done their job. Staff has done their job. Um, and there's, these are regulations that the city should be very, very proud of. Um, and now we just have to make our way through the court.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Um, how long do you think, uh, you anticipate a decision soon on the appeals part? Do we anticipate, uh, a timeframe of when, uh,
Our.
this could be over, or?
Our attorney's given us, um, a few different, generally in the, the, the wait time on the, uh, for the land use court at this point is about a year.
So we should sit back and relax for a minute, sadly.
We're, we are, we are continuing our work and moving on to other areas and other projects. It's not a, we're not stopping.
In addition to that, we're continuing to talk to developers.
Absolutely.
As well.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, do you put us your hand? Okay, Counselor Piazza?
Mayor, so the appeals that are up in court, is it, um, mostly from residences? They're looking at the values of their home due to the, uh, their view from home?
There are four individuals who are listed. They all live on the same street. They all live on the same side of the street, I believe. Um, and they're, um, I don't wanna speak for them,
Mm-hmm.
but the, the major complaints were about the views and that it was the value of their home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I should be very clear here, just as I was with the commission and with the public. There is no legal protection to a view. So it, that's, that's the law in Connecticut.
It's interesting, by me, 'cause I, my, you know, my house backs up to, uh, Fort Griswold. I'd be like, so sad if somebody came all sudden and said, "Oh, we bought this lot, and now we're building this apartment building behind you," you know? But it's good to know now, you know?
Understood, and it's, and we did our best. We, we even lowered by one story, um, one stretch, um, near, just below the, um, the stretch on the east side of, um, Thames Street from a little bit north of Broad,
Mm-hmm.
um, up to where the old police barracks were, right around there. Um, there is a map that is also in the PowerPoint that you can see, and I think I actually attached it separately to the, I'm sure I did. I know I attached it separately in the email that I sent you all.
And that's thirty-five feet, right? There's a max there?
Forty feet is the max, which is only five feet taller than what's allowed now everywhere. Um, so it, on the, on Thames Street, in that area.
Right.
Um, it does.
And then the topography, if you look at a topo map, where would that street be? It's about seventy feet, I think, right?
I don't understand the question.
The height of that street.
So at the top of the.
Not Thames Street, it's the street in question.
The top of the cliff, uh, along the Thames River is at about twenty feet above sea level. So those cliffs are about, from the top of the water to the top of the cliff, it's about twenty feet. Then from there, up to the highest point in Groton Bank, which is eighty-nine point six or something, feet above sea level, so the di, that difference is sixty-something feet. Um, and depending upon the, the, one of the things that was voiced was that there was this fear that there was going to be this, you know, big wall, that it was, you know, that, none of those things can actually happen. None of those scary things that people said can, uh, one way or another, by, by addressing the forms of buildings, they, that can't happen. So, um, it's a, again, it is a very nuanced and, um, very, the things that are in those regulations are there for a reason. Um, things like frontage buildout, and I mean, I can, I could rattle off all kinds of terms that are not import, uh, they're, they're very important, but it's not. There are a lot of thing, there's a lot of detail in all of these things, and they work together.
And when you're talking about, uh, cycling down Thames and walking down Thames and the shade and so forth and so on, so like, uh, my daughter and I went to New York for her visa. You know, there was a lot of places in New York that, they have a lot of trees, obviously purposely planted, but then there were areas where, and it was hot then. Um, so I'm looking at when I was a little girl biking down there and walking down there. I don't really remember it being that so hot. I couldn't tolerate it, although I would say, like, I have walked to the base when we didn't have a car, and military high was awful, but coming, so that round corner from Thames around, that's kind of like you're most exposed. But I'm just wondering, so back in those days, even though we had a large number at E B, uh, what's the forestry deficit that we've done since, like, in the last fifty years, let's say?
I can't speak to what we've taken down. I know that there is a commitment, and it is in both the P O C D. I know the mayor has talked about this. I know that there is a commitment and it is in both the POCD, I know the mayor has talked about this a great deal and has commit, has been committed to it. And the resiliency report that I will let Sierra get to also includes that. I think we have a lot of heat islands within the city. And unfortunately Thames Street has sort of become one of those over time. And so one of the next things we're going to do is to look at how can we use development to make sure that those things are at least made better, if not rectified. When you look at the renderings in the, at the end, toward the end of the PowerPoint, what you'll see is that there's room on private property for those tree, for street trees. And so, and just the planting of street trees, you know, every twenty feet or whatever, is, makes such a huge difference in both summer and winter. The shelter of buildings also makes huge diff, I'm like, there are lots of things that are included in this that will enable us to control some of those negative climate influences. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Thank you, Leslie, Sierra. We'll turn it over to you to talk about resiliency.
Can I just remind you that I sent them to your council email address?
Okay, good evening, everyone. All right, we had some good time. So I'm mostly just probably going to talk from the screen. There's a different videos and stuff, so sorry if my head is towards you or anything, but we can just get started, so. All right, so for tonight's overview for the resiliency, I wanted to cover the 2022 resiliency plan, just do a little overview of what that was, some of the objectives that we've highlighted in there. Also to discuss a little bit more detail about stormwater mitigation and urban heat island, and then do a highlight of some of the ongoing projects that we have. So, let me just minimize this for a second and move this out the way. All right, so the 2022 Community Resiliency Plan included a vulnerability and risk assessment to climate change and sea level rise. And we identified seven objectives for the city to continue with. That risk assessment looked at flooding, stormwater, heat and erosion and all that its impacts on the community, taking into consideration or the perspective of our social demographics, residents, commercials, our infrastructure, community resources and our natural systems. So that whole risk assessment kind of resulted in this, this blob of colors. The city was divided into six different segments and then each of these categories were ranked based off of their impact of what climate change or sea level rise would do for that. So you can notice in here, like the Five Corners area and in front of Electric Boat is high. A lot of that is associated just with the amount of impervious surface that is there and the stormwater implications and urban heat that that is causing to that area, among a few other things, but you'll hear me talk a lot about that as we move forward. Some of the objectives that were identified in the plan, number one was to reduce the impact of stormwater flooding. Two, mitigate extreme heat impacts on residents and visitors. That's that Thames Street and walking and trying to have trees discussion. Enhance the resilience of local businesses. Create a flood resilient shoreline. Create a resilient transportation network. Increase resilience on socially vulnerable populations. And to lead by example, or improve, oops, sorry. Improve the resilience of our municipal assets. And also us kind of just leading by example and taking that charge and getting our projects. Having example projects that we can encourage developers and other organizations to do the kind of help us move these things forward. All right, so climate change in this term, and this concept is viewed as a long-term shifts in temperature and weather patterns. These shifts can be caused by human activity, greenhouse gases, or the greenhouse effect. You guys may be experiencing, whether you're on the bandwagon of climate change or not, I think everybody can acknowledge that our storm systems have been different lately, they have been more intensified. And then with us being a community where we are surrounded by water on three sides, this is very prevalent for us to make sure that we pay attention to and see how we can be more resilient to address its impacts. And so the definition of resilience is a community's ability to recover or adapt from a significant event either caused by nature or by human action. And most of my, you can address climate change in different fashions, it's either mitigation or resilience. And a lot of my work have been in the resilience lens of looking at the infrastructure, looking at preparedness and also addressing things with like green infrastructure and how we could just be, build more resiliently. So in regards to climate change and stormwater flooding, this graphic kind of just goes into thinking about Five Corners as an example, is that paved or impervious surfaces force water directly into our drainage system. This runoff can collect pollutants and this drainage system can actually overwhelm our sys, um, system. We would like to see more green space and vegetation there because that would allow the water to actually infiltrate into the ground. And then the water, the vegetation helps actually hold the water in, that was clicking through pretty quickly, in place. This slows the water flow into the drainage system and also helps filter out the pollutants as well. So definitely want more trees, more trees. So slow, our goal is to enslow the, um, slow the flow and increase vegetation. Some examples of strategies that are actually already being implemented. You know that we have a rain barrel initiative that's taking place now. You can order your rain barrels. I believe there's a link online, but it's a great initiative through our Public Works Department. And then also we're doing installations of rain gardens around the city. And I'll get, have more examples of that as we go forward.
Counselor Sheffield?
Now, can people who rent get those barrels as well? Or I mean, they may have to ask their landlord, I guess possibly, but is that accessible for those?
I was going to say, I definitely think they'll have to coordinate with their landlords, but it is open to, anybody can purchase the rain barrels. But yes, if you rent, please connect with your landlord, especially on the installation.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to urban heat, you hear us kind of mention this a lot and it's, it can be impacted by surface, um, impervious surface, lack of vegetation, back to that human activity and then the type of materials that we actually use on our buildings. And it's kind of like if you're walking down the street, it's that heat or experience that you're feeling, that's that urban heat island. So the city of Groton is actually an environmental justice community, so this is something that is kind of high on our radar to try to improve, but also it impacts on public health and energy use. I came across this, this small video kind of about urban heat, but it's starting to mesh the conversation of a lot of the things that we can do to address stormwater mitigation are also things that address urban heat islands. And so this graphic kind of goes through what some of those strategies could be and, and ways that we can kind of incorporate it, so. I won't keep letting it play, but I encourage you to go back and look at the, some of these links in more detail. So in regards to project highlights, things that we have going on now, we have the Five Corner Stormwater Assessment. So this is a project that we have partnered with the Nature Conservancy in Foston and O'Neil is the contractor that we are working with. We are going to conduct a comprehensive stormwater runoff study and feasibility assessment for tree plantings within the Five Corners neighborhood. And right now that is, if we were, you know, city of Groton is long, so it's like from Fort Griswold to Rainview, everything in the middle of that is kind of our focus area for this project. So we will be having teams going out to do some screening of the pipe systems to start that assessment work. We are in the process of looking for people for our steering committee. So I do welcome any counselor that may be interested to learn a little bit more about this project or help assess the recommendations and come up with, kind of brainstorm and come up with different strategies of how to move projects forward. And we are looking for some support with the committee. The committee will meet three times over the course of the project to do a deep dive into those recommendations. And right now also, the Nature Conservancy is doing door knocking in the neighborhoods. They're trying to work with any resident that may want to plant trees on their property that would also benefit the community as well. So if anybody's also interested, or if you know anyone, please, you can give them my contact information and we can put them in touch with the team so that they could be part of this process as well. Also just wanted to highlight some of the images that we've got to kind of support this study. So there's been sheet flow observed coming down Hamilton Street, kind of to, so we know where Five Corners is, but if you kind of go down towards EB, there's like another little four-corner spot where Thames, Eastern, Smith and Pukonic meet. So these are kind of images that lead to that point. And we've already have seen the impacts of the storms kind of flooding that intersection and even had to do a project with Electric Boat in town of Groton to fix a retaining wall not that long ago because of this, because of the impacts that we're seeing here. So this is timely for us to do the assessment that will help us identify what the projects are that we need to then move forward with. Are there any questions in regards to that? Okay.
Comment, still looking at this picture, especially those stairs. We have, I traversed those many, many times as a young girl. And along that street, I, I'm wondering, I'm thinking that all along that street up, when you go up there into Dennison and Oak and Hamilton and so forth, that there was definitely more vegetation. And I'm wondering if that's really a large impact of this water coming down.
I'm saying previously there was and you've seen a reduction in the years of vegetation in that neighborhood?
Right, like I've never, ever, ever seen the rain come down like that before when I was younger, ever.
And the thing is now too, though, we're getting way more rain than we have back in the day. And then it's hot and we're getting more, and our days are hotter. So it's like, it's not going to be a comparison from back in the day to now because it's like the, the conditions we're dealing with are completely different. But I do think the vegetation probably has something to do with, or the lack of vegetation has something to do with that stormwater flow that we're seeing.
Yeah, because when you went around the, the area, everybody had a garden, almost their entire yard was garden. I mean, where we lived on Dennison, it was a gravel parking lot, so it's more pervious. You know, it wasn't concrete, but then they still had a garden, then the next house had a garden. And then, you know, and we're talking like large gardens, not like small ones, you know? Everybody had a garden, now it's like parking lot, parking lot, parking lot, parking lot.
So your, your point is recognized. One of the challenges we have is we do have a lot of paved areas there. And so with the impervious surface, you're getting a lot of sheet flow and that's what directs that. If, if you remember when Thames Street, when we repaved Thames Street, they actually put a four-foot wide pipe in the road and helped, to help direct the water waste to help minimize that kind of thing. And then some of that went, some of those stormwater drains outflowed into EB, on EB's property. EB has now closed those off due to security measures. And so we're having a look at the impact of that. And I'm talking to EB about, is there a way that we can get those back, get them opened and still have security for Electric Boat Shipyard? In addition to that, we're also looking at, instead of paving, get people to put gravel lots or some kind of a pervious surface. We're going to be doing, uh, putting some pervious pavers going up. So going from the parking lot at Pavilion Five around that parking lot, there's going to be pervious pavers put there. And also going up to the tennis courts. And that'll be done later this year. But that was an intentional project when the funds were, when the funds were diverted from Lake George because we needed to go and test the material that was in there. So, you know, we're doing some locally. We're also talking to the owners and developers to see if we can get them to help us with this, especially from the sheet flow aspect. Because the sheet flow of the water is just one part. You also, the sheet, the, the same impervious surface gives you a heat island. And that's not good. And the fact that we don't have trees, then that just, that makes it even worse because you don't have shading effect. You also don't have CO2 absorption, those kinds of things. So we're trying to review, look at and address those kinds of issues. So Sierra, I'll turn it back over to you.
Any other questions on Five Corners? Remember, if you want to serve on the steering committee, just let me know. All right, so the Southeastern Connecticut Youth Climate Summit, um, this, this has been a really fun partnership. So this is a partnership with the Marine Science High School in the town of Groton. We have been working with the environmental club at the school to kind of put together a platform for students to be able to talk about climate change and kind of how that is impacting them and ways that they want to make improvements or just fields that they want to study later on. So we kind of started out with a really small group in, back in 2024, where it was just like a listening session at the beach. And that has turned into two youth climate summits. The last one we held was in February and we had over two hundred students come from eight different schools. We were housed at the, um, the Pequot Museum hosted us this year. And it was just really amazing to kind of just see all the students come together. I'm going to be respectful of time, but there's a, NBC did a clip on the students and kind of what they were doing. So it's a three-minute clip, I do encourage you guys to kind of go watch it. It is nice to kind of hear the youth give their perspective and the fact that they, this program was an effort that was designed by youth for youth kind of made it even more meaningful. So this was, this was a really fun project. For the next, sorry, questions in regards to the Youth Climate Summit? The next one is My Coast. So My Coast is an initiative that is being led by Connecticut NER. It is going to be a tool that allows residents to submit photos of flood events and high tides to a public database. This information can then be used by municipalities to improve planning for local flood events and to increase, increase public awareness about coastal flooding. There are two workshops that are coming up. The first one is in April, it will be a webinar. It's going to be an overview of the actual tool and kind of how it is, you can use it. And then the second is an in-person workshop at Yukon Avery Point where we will have guests from Rhode Island, actually has already implemented the tool and they already have engagement and plans kind of spinning from this. So they're going to come and talk to us about how they're using it so we can start to develop ideas of how this can be a more beneficial tool, so. There is a registration link to these workshops within the plat, um, presentation if you would like to sign up. Any questions for this one? The next project is with the Connecticut Department of Connecticut Deep. They are doing a coastal, a public, sorry, coastal public access fellowship program, which is doing a review of all the coastal access- which is doing a review of all the coastal access points in Connecticut, and starting to identify the existing public assets, what improvements they may need, whether there's opportunities to establish additional sites, also looking at improving signage to those sites, developing outreach material, and I'm doing some improvements to the online database that shares this information out. So, we are in the planning stage of this. They are setting up a steering committee for this project also. So, if anybody is interested in participating, please let me know. The next project that we have going on is a Coastal Hazards Analysis, Modeling, and Prediction System. So, this is also a project that is being led by Connecticut Deep. Basically, it is a data, they're developing a database that emergency managers, our infrastructure staff, and planners could use to help make better decisions based off of consequences that we may face of different storm scenarios. So, they basically map out our existing conditions, facilities, and then do different modeling for different storm projections, so we can have actual kinda real-time data of what that impact may be, so we can make better plans for it. So, we are in the data collection part of this, so they are doing some site assessments. They did visit the PAF system on Thane Street, and they are reviewing a couple other sites along the coast. You can see that all this highlighted blue is the main focus area of this project. No questions for this? Another initiative we are working on is called Think at the Sink. It is a resident campaign to better educate on not putting fats, rags, oils, and grease down our sewer, down your sinks or drains, and kind of how that impacts our systems, but also kind of educating other people of basic, better ways to recycle, better ways to get, dispose of your waste. This is through the Baker Cove Watershed Committee, and also partnership with the Town of Groton. And we have, I've been working with Michelle Mithlin over there, and we are doing outreach to the apartment complexes, so there's better education on how those systems kinda work, and engagement with the renters. Alright, next, also with the Baker Cove Watershed Committee, we have an upcoming cleanup at Birch Plain Creek. It's gonna be on April eleventh at nine AM. If you are available, we'd love for you guys to come and join us. It should be about a two-hour set, and yeah, it's a, it's a really good time. This is a partnership that includes the Mystic Aquarium, Connecticutner, and also the Town of Groton. So, circling back on the rain gardens, so last year, we installed about a thousand square feet of rain gardens, three, ended up being three gardens at Birch Plain Creek, and then one garden here at Washington Park. So, this will be the first year that we will see them come to bloom, so I'm actually looking excited to do that, but this was a good partnership and support from our Public Works Office and our Parks and Rec Department. This year, we are looking to do to approximately two thousand square feet of rain gardens, actually here at the municipal building. It will be a total of four gardens that are in the front, and it's really designed to try to mitigate the stormwater runoff from the parking lot, preventing it, one, from getting into our system, and two, into the Birch Plain Creek, which is kinda off to the side over here. So, this is projects in planning, we're getting closer and closer to implementate, to the installation date, which we will stay tuned for, cause we are gonna need more volunteers to help with that as well. Also, we have the Heat Smart Groton Campaign that is going on to help residents learn three steps to be more energy smart, that is including improve your home, your home's energy efficiency by getting a home efficiency service, insulating your home and making other improvements, and considering switching your heating and cooling services to a more energy-efficient heat pump. So, this program is still going on, it is in a, is a great program, I will at least say, explore it. It is a partnership between Groton Utilities, Pace, and Lantern. Lantern are the contractors that are probably gonna go on-site to do the assessment and the work. We have heard really good reviews of their just respect and just the quality of their work and the details that they go into with the client, so. Please share this program with people who may feel can benefit. And then, lastly, we are, have the FEMA Brick Direct Technical Assistant Program. So, basically, this is three years of technical assistant that we get from FEMA to actually develop projects for FEMA funding. So, for instance, Five Corners, we're doing all this work to assess what are the recommendations and what are the projects that we need to move forward, and this scenario, we could move that entire project forward to FEMA to have them assess, okay, now, this is the project, now what funding could you move forward with? So, that's just an example. We've talked about tide gates, we talked about a few other things. So, we're in the process now of working with staff to understand what type of projects we would like for FEMA to explore and work with us on. However, this is currently paused, since this is a federal program, our contract and everything is in place. They don't feel as though it's gonna be taken away from us, but they're just currently at a pause until they get more direction from their leadership of how things are gonna play out. But, I'm looking forward to this. This was a joint application between the Town of Groton and Groton Know Inc., so, Long Point, sorry, yeah, Groton, Long Point. So, it's nice to kinda see the collaboration there, and also, some of these projects obviously cross jurisdictions, so they would need to be a group effort anyway. And, that's about all I had for today.
Open the floor for questions. Anybody has any questions? Deputy Mayor Depo?
I don't have any questions, actually. I, I think it's, it's always nice to get an update of what's happening in the economic development planning world. And I think, is this presentation gonna be up on our website anywhere that people can, that residents can see it, or pieces of it?
I'm sure, yeah, I can work on making sure it's up there.
Like some, obviously, like some of the slides are, have direct links to register for things, or, so I know that we've been posting on Facebook about certain things, you know, events. But, I think a lot of the presentation put together is, it's really informative for residents who are interested in these things, like here's twelve options of ways you can get involved and help, you know, all these things that we're working on. I do think that people are looking to engage more locally on, you know, resiliency projects. I know I've heard a lot about it lately, especially with all these big storms we've been having, so. And I know anyone that drives down by Five Corners or Eastern Point Road when there's a storm is well aware of these issues, cause you can't escape them driving through the city, so. You know, if anyone's interested, also, I'm sure as usual, they can contact the mayor's office or your office, cause there, there are a lot of opportunities for residents to collaborate and help their neighbors and help all of these things, and all of these little things that we're changing, and, you know, like Counselor Piazza was saying, like, when there was more vegetation, there seemed to be less runoff, you know, those little things make a difference. So, if residents are interested in helping us, there are a lot of opportunities and a lot, a lot of variety of ways they can get involved, so thank you for putting that all together.
Any other comments? Counselor Piazza?
Just wanted to say thank you for all your work in this, and it's nice to see like, rain gardens coming in and, you know, things actually being implemented, so I appreciate everybody that's involved and especially all your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Sierra, thank you, Leslie. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second?
We have a motion to the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, if unanimous, for the record, Counselor Norris texted me and he left at seven thirty. So, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you. Put some rain barrels down at the, on Thane Street, catch all that water.
Someone just texted me about rain barrels.
Right, right, yeah, just piping, you know, some gutter stuff, and then let the people feed off of that to water their stuff.